I'd like to call to order the Douglas zoning Board of Appeals meeting on Wednesday, January 6th at 7:05 PM, January 6th, 2021, at 7:05. The first agenda item tonight is a public hearing continued for Rebecca Laramie, case number 2020-0417 Huff Road. Through the town council and the town engineer, they withdrew that application because that's the application that we couldn't vote on because we had too many absences.
Did they respond and...
I was told by Bill that they were sending it over to them. Attorney, did you send that over to...
You're muted.
Yeah, one second.
Hello?
Barry, you're muted.
Oh, he's muted. He must be doing it.
Sorry.
All right, there we go.
Yes, I emailed that over to the attorney directly to Mr. Tundit and copied everyone else.
Okay, very good. Appreciate it. Thank you. So they're withdrawing that original case because we had a attendance issue and we didn't have enough members that could vote.
Right.
And then they amended it, and that's the next case. So we have a request to withdraw, so I guess we could...
Make a motion.
Take a vote to, yeah, make a motion, take a vote to accept the withdrawal.
Accept their withdrawal.
Yep. Some votes. Okay.
Second.
Okay. So we have requested from the applicant a continuance of case 2020-04, and we have a motion by Mr. Bombara and Mr. Fitzpatrick seconded it to accept their withdrawal. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. And just for the record, Ron was appointed as a full member by the Board of Selectmen, so he's a full member as of this evening. And then on this case coming up, Ron, John, Mike, Sean, and myself will be voting on it, and Lou will be participating in it. We have all the full members here tonight, so they'll all be voting. Okay. So the next agenda item is a public hearing and amended request from Rebecca Laramie, case number 2021-0117 Huff Road. The date of the application was December 2nd, and it was advertised in the Telegram and Gazette as well as being posted in the Town Hall. And it reads as follows: "The Town of Douglas zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing at 7:00 PM on Wednesday, January 6th, 2021, in the Douglas Municipal Center Resource Room, 29 Depot Street, Douglas, Mass. to hear the following application. Public hearing for Rebecca Laramie has filed for an amendment to a special permit pursuant to MGL Chapter 40A, Section 9, and the Douglas Zoning Bylaws, Section 3.4.3, nonconforming structures to replace a metal roof and cabana depicted on a certified plot plan dated August 5th, 2016 with a roofed pavilion as depicted on a certified plot plan dated August 25th, 2020, both being submitted with the application. The prior existing structure had a side yard setback of 2.5 feet to 3.2 feet, while the proposed roofed pavilion has a side yard setback ranging from 3.1 feet to 4.8. The property is located in an RA Rural Agricultural Zone District at 17 Huff Road, Assessors Map 111, Pascal 41. The purpose of this hearing is to provide an opportunity for public comment. A copy of the application may be viewed in the Community Development Department during regular business hours. Any person interested or wishing to be heard on the proposed application should appear at the time and place designated." Okay. So the applicant and your attorney are here?
Yes, we're here.
Okay, great. You're welcome to make your presentation.
Certainly, thank you. Yes, we're here before this board requesting a special permit under Section 3.4.3 of the bylaws concerning a nonconforming structure. We're seeking it for the reconstruction of a prior structure. If you look at, I included in the package, the certified plot plan. And let me first say what the board this evening has determined under its rules whether or not the reconstructed structure is both substantially more detrimental than the prior existing metal roof and cabana in the neighborhood than it is. And so the issue here is whether or not the reconstructed structure is more substantially detrimental. First, I'd like to show, point out that there's a certified plot plan dated 8/5/2016 included in our package. The board looks at and see what the prior structure used to be. It was a 20-foot by 10-and-a-half-foot metal roof with a cabana on it. And the side yard setbacks there range from 2.1 feet to 3.2 feet. If you then compare that to the reconstructed structure, on August 25th, 2020, has built plans on it, what was built, and if you look at that, you can see that it's now a 20-foot or 24-foot, what we call a roofed pavilion. And that if you look at the side yard setbacks, it's 3.4 feet. So the side yard setbacks are better than the other structure. I'd also like to point out that this is an engineered structure. It's much more safe. It's built pursuant to engineering standards. In fact, as recently as this was, this engineer added further standards to ensure the safety of this. And I would submit to the board that the reconstructed nonconforming structure is not more substantially detrimental. In fact, I would submit that it's not detrimental at all. It's a much better building and not building, a much better pavilion and roof than what was there and provides much more safety to the neighborhood than what was there previously. And therefore, we request that the board grant us the special permit and make a finding that the reconstructed structure is not more substantially detrimental than the prior structure.
Any board members have any questions for the applicant?
The, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, go ahead, Mike.
Fitzpatrick. The plot plan you have is dated 2016. That shows the roof, the shed, and that little cabana that's in the back. So due to the, what we went through with the previous application, I went on the Assessors' map, and I looked it up, and it shows the cabana, but it doesn't show any of the other stuff. So then I took it one step further, and I went on to Google Earth to see what was on there. And in 2013, the shed is there with the little fireplace next to it and that cabana in the back, but that metal roof is not there. And I don't believe there was any permit issued for that roof, that little metal roof, to make it a pre-existing structure because it's there less than the, I think it's a 10-year period that you would be automatically granted rights to have that.
It's my understanding that that metal roof was built 15 years ago.
No, Barry. The cabana, the wooden one, was built in the 1950s.
Okay, and when was the metal roof put up?
It was a number of years ago. I honestly don't recollect. My Google Earth showed it, so I don't know how far back. But that one was, it had different things over the years. So first, it was just some pipes and like cloth over it. And then it went to like a tent-ish thing with PVC pipe, always over the fire pit. And then it went to like a cloth structure over the fire pit, and then the metal one. To be honest, I don't know the dates of when all of those, they went up, they came down, they went up, they came down. The weather always kind of destroyed stuff. But, and the fire pit as well, kind of just destroyed stuff. So the metal roof was kind of the final thing. Didn't, wouldn't know about, you know, a permit for a car. It was like a carport that got screwed to the ground because we were just nervous of it blowing away. I can't tell you when. I don't really, I don't really recollect when. But it was definitely there, you know, when the survey man came after my in-laws had passed away. We had the land survey to make sure we knew kind of where the boundaries were, and that's why it showed up on that plot.
And it's not from 2013, you know?
I mean, if you're, you know, Mr. Fitzpatrick, if you're saying that Google Earth has it as 13 with nothing there, then I, obviously, it's Google Earth. I can't say that. I really don't know. So if it wasn't there in 13, it wasn't there. I really don't know. There were multiple, multiple structures over the cement patio over the years, all different fabrics and always something over, always something over that because that's where the picnic tables were put. So it started as, you know, just fabric over pipes, and then it just, it went from one kind of configuration to another.
Mr. Chairman?
Was a nonconforming structure in place of the metal roof for a number of years?
Yeah, like, you know, first, like, almost look at the tent, and then the next one was PVC, and then it was just too, it's too windy by the lake. So all those things were, you know, just destroyed by weather. So the metal roof was kind of the final thing. Would have never thought that you have to ask permission for that. So just like this whole thing, I had no idea that I would have to ask permission. So I don't know, I know we had it since we owned it, so it had to have been before 16. But I don't know. Those were times where my in-laws were very ill, and I don't, I just don't have a timestamp of when it went up.
Okay. If I can, just, some of the members weren't here at the original hearing, so I just wanted to bring them up to speed. This case all came about because the building, former building commissioner got a complaint from a resident in the area that a structure was being built on the property. The building commissioner at the time went out, saw that a structure was in process of being built, and issued a stop work order. And at that time, the applicant filed to get a special permit for the structure they had started. And Mark had issued a stop work order, and when they came to the meeting the next month, we were told that it was completely built with the exception of there was no cap on the roof. The roof was completed, but there was no cap. So the work, the stop work order was completely ignored, and that's why we're here.
Mr. Chairman, can I address that?
Sure.
With respect to that, it is my understanding that Ms. Laramie had discussions with the ...
Mark.
Mr. Tundit, and that it was her understanding that when he stopped, issued the cease and desist, she should continue to take actions, make it a safe canopy. And after that...
Wait, hold on, Barry, just one second. You had said from, in one month. It was definitely not one month. That thing was half-built for months and months because COVID hit right as this whole thing started, and it had one stick holding the thing up. So I talked to Mark, and now I just want to make sure the times, I talked to Mark, and then, go ahead, Barry.
Okay. And then after the last meeting, Mr. Chairman, after that meeting, we had a structural engineer go out to take a look at it, and we included in our package a letter from the structural engineer dated August 12th, 2020, wearing the second, to determine whether this was complete or whether anything, what was done was done to make it safe. And based on his opinion, if you see, since that time, if you turn back to April and May, since that time, you and your contractor completed the structure work, and many of the finishes and nonstructure elements have not been completed. And basically, if you read that the, and then on the second page, next to the last paragraph, the engineer said, "We respected the necessity of these structural modifications." SSC, that's the engineer, contends that all of the structural work is necessary in order to ensure the structure is safe. So basically, if Ms. Laramie had left it in the condition as it was at the time of the cease and desist, you would have a very dangerous situation if it wasn't safe and wind or weather could have get inside the property or people. And so...
But I asked Mark. I asked him, and he said that he has to make it safe.
Well, Mark informed this board at the last hearing that he issued a stop work order because there was not a building permit.
Correct.
And that he did, that he...
We left it alone for months and months.
But a stop work order means stop. Doesn't mean continue.
We left it alone for months and months.
Okay.
And it became, the stick that was holding it up, that we stuck up there to hold it up, I mean, it was half-built. So the stick that was holding it up, I called Mark, and I told him that I was very concerned. And he, I have an email, I'm sure it's in there, that he said it was my responsibility to make sure it was safe.
Right. Which could have been accomplished by dismantling it. It was only, in the early stages of construction, we have pictures that the town building commissioner at the time showed us, there was just a frame and a couple rafters. So it could have been much made safe without moving forward.
Absolutely right. Absolutely right. We could have gone the other way.
Right. And you didn't, and you didn't have a building permit, so you did this on your own. You created your own hardship, not hardship, created your own situation.
And, Mr. Chairman, I agree that the situation was created, but she thought she was doing all that she was supposed to, which was making it safe. Because if it had been left in the condition it was, it poses a danger to other people, other properties.
Okay. Well, I can tell you that I personally remember very distinctly that Ms. Laramie, we asked if we could do a site visit, and she said there was a couple of sticks, were the exact words. It's in the minutes of the meeting.
That was the very first meeting.
Right. It was only a couple sticks. So a couple sticks could be removed quite, quite simply.
You're absolutely right. I did not go that way. I honestly didn't even think of it.
Second, John.
When I was, when he said make it safe, I honestly did not think of dismantling. I just didn't.
Okay.
You're right. It could have gone either way.
Okay, John, go ahead.
As Mr. Chairman said, you told us that we had a couple of sticks up, and we requested to go out and take a look at it. First, you said no. And then we asked you, well, we could walk the site anyway, whether to build in a house or an addition, we still have to walk the site. So that next day, I left here, and I went to that, your house on the rez, I'm sorry, Manchon Point. And it was completed. And you told us at that evening, let me finish, you told us that evening that only had a few sticks in it. That's all it was. You talked about sticks. And when I went down, and I called the chairman from my truck, and I said to him, "This is all done outside of the cap on the very peak." And I didn't even see the peak at that time. But from what happened before and now, things have all changed here. Everything's changed here.
I think it may be helpful to show those pictures.
Yes.
So everybody will understand what actually was there. So, Ms. Laramie and attorney, what I did is I emailed over to the cable company, the cable people, to the Assessors' plan and the two things that I seen on Google Earth. That way, you can understand what I'm talking about. So they're going to show, they're going to show the pictures. That's the one from the street. That's 2013. It shows the cabana roof in the back.
Nothing else.
So can we switch to the second picture, please? That one shows it straight on, so you can clearly see there's nothing there but the little fireplace and the shed. Then the third picture, please. I'm sorry, it's a little fuzzy, but that shows under the blue balloon there, that's the cabana. On the, this is on the town Assessors' map. That's your house number 17, and the garage is up front. So that's what I'm going by, is you produced the, the as-built from 2016, and then there was some confusion. We were going back and forth as to what it was, so I went on the Assessors' map first, seeing this, which made me go to Google Earth to see what it was. And when I put it in, that's, I don't have to search for it. That's the picture that comes up. And down the bottom of it, it'll say 2013. So just so everybody understands what I commented on and where the confusion may be.
So the fire pit and the...
Shed.
Shed were never, they never showed up on an Assessors' map?
No, they don't show up on the, they don't show up on that Assessors' map that I, I don't know if they ever did. But on the one that's currently on, I went on today and took that one off. It's a fresh map, and that's the same one that I seen a couple months ago.
The cabana has always been there, but they never, ever put the little shed on...
No, that was...
I'm not sure what you're looking at, but the town site thing?
Yeah, and it's a town Assessors' map. If you go on the GIS, you can look up everybody's property and see what the structures are there.
Right, so I don't know if it was because square footage was too small. I don't...
Yeah, that's possible. That's possible. Yep.
Yeah. So in the cement, the fire pit, that was what the, it's not, is it Assessors? No. It's the guy with the, that drew the picture of the ground. That's what the fireplace was, like, only two feet away from the property line. So when we took the fireplace and the shed out of there, we kind of moved away from the property line. So we had, you know, the roof, the structure, all different kinds of, you know, makeshift stuff always was over that cement patio, which is at the end where the fire pit is. So the patio goes right straight from the cabana all the way over to the, to the snow's property line where the fire pit is.
Lou?
When was that built?
Which particular thing?
The patio and the roof.
The new one?
Yeah, whatever you want to know, or the old one. I mean, it's...
Oh, the old one. It's on the Assessors' map. You can go back as far as you want. That thing's been built since the early 50s. When my in-laws cleaned the lot and cleaned the lot and built the first little shack they had on that property. They actually built that cabana thing first so that they could have a place to stay out of the weather while they were building the house. And of course, you obviously need the shed, so the shed was built, it was falling down. So I, the shed, I've been with my husband 30 years, so the shed has to be older than 30 years. And the fire pit, well, fire pit's been there forever. And that was at the property line, like, two feet off the property line, forever and ever and ever.
So that's when it was built? So how many years ago?
This little square.
15.
This was, this is that. That was always been there, that little cabana.
Okay, now, so...
That little square was there.
Okay.
That's on your Assessors'.
And when'd you pour the cement?
Where are you?
Where are you?
That's the house. So this is what they did. Now...
So they enlarged it.
Come here.
Moved it closer to the lot line. That's the issue.
Just this little...
That little square.
Yeah.
And that shed. And then they took all that out and put this up.
So who's complaining?
It doesn't matter. The building...
We don't, we think it's the neighbor right next door, but we don't know. I went to every single neighbor and asked them if I could, you know, chat with them about my roof. Every single neighbor sent emails that they were fine with the roof, that there was nothing wrong with the roof. I did make someone mad. I know you guys think I'm stank, I'm so nice in there with you guys, but I made someone mad. And I think that the very next day, suddenly, there was a gentleman down there. So I think it was the neighbor I made mad. But, you know, at the end of the day, everybody sent emails, said nice things. Even one guy even sent a picture and said, "This is way better than that whole thing she had up there." So I...
We also want to, we want to make note also that nobody's here to support this application tonight either. Nobody felt strongly enough to come. Nobody felt strongly enough to come. So, one second. Sean? One second, sir. Sean?
I just had a question about these emails from the Butters. Did you deliver those to the file here?
Yes.
Okay, oh, I'm sorry.
I was actually told that it didn't matter. It didn't matter. They don't care about that, I was told.
No, Ms. Laramie, we did receive them all. We did receive them all, Ms. Laramie.
You told me you didn't care about it. You said I didn't...
Ms. Laramie?
So, excuse me, it was 10...
You submitted with the first application?
One of the multiple, multiple times that I've seen that, I was nervous that somebody really didn't like it. So I went and asked everybody, is there, is there something you would want me to do different? Is there anything?
Yeah, I'm asking you a question. Just tell me. Before, it was 10 by 20, am I right, Mike?
That's correct.
And, yeah, and she...
Well, no. The original one is, was much smaller. That was probably like a 9 by 9 or something like that?
No, it was actually 13 by 11.
Oh, 13 by 11, okay.
And then 20 by, then the metal roof was 20 by 10.
10 and 1/2, yep.
And then the shed, the shed was a 12 by 5. So all the roofs altogether would add up to that.
Yeah, but that's not possible. The dimension that you just gave for the cabana is impossible based on the certified plot plan by an engineer.
Yeah, something like 11 by 10 or...
No, it's impossible. The widest width, the widest width of the metal roof was 10 and 1/2 feet, and this is considerably smaller than 10 and 1/2 feet. So...
Which is, the cabana?
Yeah.
Yes.
The wooden thing? I can't see your paper, so I don't know.
Well, you submitted it, it's part of your application. So...
Looking at the...
The certified plot plan.
2000.
Right.
Yeah. Where it kind of all goes out, and then it goes, it goes at an angle over to the shed. Like, it goes straight and right beside the shed.
Okay. Does anybody else have any questions for the applicant?
Yeah, I really don't understand it. We're over here talking about something that, you know, I mean, it doesn't make no sense. I mean, the guy made the property look better. He took down all this other crazy stuff. He dressed up the property. It looks better to me. Am I right?
Did it without permits and built it too close to the lot line.
Okay.
Without permits.
Well, you know, it's the thing, he built it too close to the lot line. Now, you know, was it a closed-in shed? No. Okay, got a roof on it.
It needed a building permit, Lou. That's the bottom line.
Yeah, no.
It needed a building permit.
But they had a building there.
No, they had a metal thing with, with...
A couple of...
Iron pipes and a top or whatever over the roof.
Okay.
And that was done apparently without a permit too, so you don't have any grandfathering rights when you do things without permits.
We got two, we got one guy down on Route 16 that just built the big garage with no permit at all.
Well, you know, that, you know, we're talking about this case.
I'm sure you went by that garage, right?
Lou, we're talking about this case. You know, I can't speak to any other...
No, no, I know, but see, I'm the alternate. I got to talk about everything, okay? That's my attitude.
I know, I just want to focus on the issue at hand.
Yeah, well, I do too, but... Well, I do too, but, you know, she made the property look better.
Without permits.
Okay, without, yep, without permits. And, you know, she made a mistake. Should she, should she be slapped on the hand? Yes. Okay, but, you know, it was, it was on the property for how many years?
No, well, that's up for debate.
2013 it wasn't there, Lou.
Wasn't there in 2013.
Can I, can I just add one?
One second, we're having a discussion, please. You need to be recognized. Thank you. Go ahead.
Now, you're telling me he wasn't there since 2013?
No, according to Google Earth, it wasn't.
Yeah, there's pictures of it, it wasn't there.
What wasn't there?
Anything.
The metal roof thing. The only thing that was there was the cabana.
There was a tiny shed there and a fireplace.
The cabana behind the house. Your original cabana was there, the fireplace was there, and the shed.
Correct. And the cement patio. You can see it in your picture, the cement patio.
I think you missed, missing his point. If, put the pictures back up on the screen for them. The patio, as your, your application here, your patio says cabana, it's in the middle of your property. Says it right there in the middle. This was added later on, whatever it was.
What was added, I'm sorry, sir, what was added?
The metal, what it said, the one that says metal roof and all, that's been, that's been added to it now. The original one that...
The metal roof, yes, had many different life cycles.
Yes.
But it, but the cement patio that absorbed that space was always, always, always there.
Well...
A cement patio doesn't require a building permit.
It isn't there now.
Yeah. I'm sorry, but if you looked at this picture right here, it's not there. Now was 2013.
Can, can we...
Say one more time?
If you looked at this picture now, this is from 2013. Nothing's there.
And there, there is a cement patio, all...
That's, that's further in the middle of the property. But even if there was a cement patio, you don't need a permit for a cement patio.
And there's no cement patio.
All right, all right, all right.
All right. We're going, this is getting too much drama.
Yeah, it is, I agree.
Too much, you're right.
Agreed.
You're right.
Does anybody have any other comments or questions?
No.
Well, I wanted to make a comment.
Yep, one second. Go ahead, Ron.
Have we all been down there?
Go ahead, Ron.
Have we all been down there?
Yeah.
Everybody?
I haven't been down there, no.
Okay. You go down to Cuff Road, there's gonna be, I'm gonna exaggerate, there's gonna be 25,000 of these things down there. They're all over the place.
Yep.
All right, so to me, it looks, the way she's explaining it, that it had, whether it was a cement patio or whether it was a, a few sticks, as she says, that was up there and that she's making it more safer now. And I'm assuming, I don't know, does she have anybody complaining in the neighborhood?
Yes, that's how this all came about. That's why she's here.
Somebody put in a complaint, I don't know who it is.
I don't know either.
Didn't get the complaint letter. Somebody put in a...
It was the, the building commissioner got a complaint. That's how this all started. He got a complaint that somebody was building something what that person thought was too close to the lot line. He went down there, there was no permit on file.
Yeah.
And he finds a structure that had been started to be built. So he said, issued a stop work order.
Can I, can I?
Yep, go ahead.
Okay. So I feel all this, you know, this drama in the room, and it is definitely, you know, a mistake on my part that I didn't come and ask. And then, you're right, Chairman, I did not remove the structure. Instead, I, I made it safe a different way. So you're absolutely right. And I did all of this without permits. Did not intend to do anything, anything bad for the town or the people, or it was not my intention. And all I'm asking is that you see the project for the worth that it is, and please accept my apology for not following the rules, as I now very, very much understand them. I will never touch anything on my property without a permit again. And I am not, I'm not out to get anyone. I checked with all of my neighbors. It is not, I mean, all the neighbors wrote nice things, and you guys wouldn't even look at that. And, and I'm not, I'm just apologizing. I'm sorry. It feels like every time we come, you, you say, "Oh, work order, you didn't do it." And like I was trying to, like I was trying to go above and beyond and outside of the world of law. I really wasn't. I have an unsafe roof. I should have just taken it down, like you said. Didn't even think of that. I think, oh, broken roof, should probably finish it. Chalked to the building inspector, he said, "You better make that safe." I say, "Okay, how do I make it safe?" So I called the engineer guy, which, by the way, was probably a super great idea, because that is a very safe structure now. So I call him and I say, "How do I make it safe? What, what boards do we have to put up to make it safe?" And he said, "Every single board, even the sheathing. The sheathing holds everything together. Learned something new. Sheathing means plywood." So I did what the engineer had, now, again, without building permit, but with Mark telling me, "You better make it safe, because you're, if something happens, they're coming after you back. You've got to make it safe."
Your point's well taken, I get it, but...
I am apologizing.
Okay, great.
I'm hoping that you'll find it in your hearts to forgive me for, for not following the rules to the T, and I am very sorry. And, and I, I just, I'm just sorry. I'm hoping that you'll see that it wasn't intended to be bad.
Yeah, nobody's saying it was intended to be bad. But our job is to enforce the zoning. And the zoning in town, in your district, is 25 feet from the lot line. And if everybody in the town of Douglas built two to three feet from the lot line, the structures in town would be closer than any city. So that's, that's what we're trying to do. I mean, if, if everybody built two or three feet from the lot line, would be, Douglas would be a city.
I agree. I understand, but you know my lot's only 50 feet wide.
I, but we all know, we all know that when you buy a, a small lot, that you have restrictions, that you have...
If you didn't buy it, it was inherited.
Okay, well, when you inherit a property, you have to know that it's undersized and you have limitations. You know, that's just...
I agree, I should know all those rules. I should have known, and I, and I didn't. And I just thought I was making my old roof better. And I thought, hey, I'm already here, I already have a roof here, if I make it better, it's a good thing. So that shed occupied the same space that we're talking about. It, it all was there. You could see it in your Google Earth.
Go ahead, Lou.
Yeah, well, you've just got yourself in trouble. Now, you gotta hope that this board has got enough votes to help you out. I'm for helping you out. But you gotta understand, you apologized, you know what you did wrong, you know what I mean? So now it's up to the board, okay? I mean, you can count on my vote, but that's not the point. The point is you were wrong. You shouldn't have done it.
Yes, sir.
Okay, did you commit a crime? I see a lot of stuff, you know? And people do things like this, okay? But like I say, we just gotta vote on it and see where you come out.
Yep.
We did move away from the property line. I know you guys don't, I know...
Yeah, yeah, it doesn't matter. You did something wrong, and now you want to call it right? You want us to help you out?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and I'm sure that, I'm sure that, you know, people, people do this all the time.
Ron, did you have something?
Well...
I don't want to be one of those people.
Okay. The person that's complaining, is that the one that's right on the line?
We don't know.
We weren't given their name.
Yeah, right.
See, after the next time meeting, they gotta tell us who complained.
Yeah, Ron, that was between the building commissioner and whoever it was that complained. We don't even know who it is.
You ran the campaign, they gotta put it on the...
Lou, one second, please.
I just have a question. I don't know if there...
Go ahead, Sean.
There seem to be other squares on the, on the TV. I didn't know if the Butters were present, or any other party was present.
No, no, there isn't.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, you're welcome. Anybody else have anything else?
Yeah, just for a little clarity, we talked about this the last time. You brought up that you have a narrow, challenging lot, Ms. Laramie. And you, and I remember you telling me that the structure was 33 feet wide, you reduced it down to 20 feet. The overall length was 33 feet. And I had said to you at the time, if you had split the difference of six and a half feet each way, you would have ended up 10 feet away from the line, and you would have been in a much better position than you are now. The problem that we have now is, to be fair and consistent to the other applicants that come before us, is one consideration that, that we have. The other consideration is, is how do you properly maintain that structure if you're less than three feet from the property line?
We are, we're not less than three feet, we're three feet.
All right, so you're three point, or three point, 3.1 feet, okay, I'm sorry. So...
Yeah, yeah.
If you're only three feet from the property line, you, you don't even have enough room to maintain it. And if, if, in fact, it is that neighbor that complained that's on that side of the property, I don't know who complained, but it is, they probably don't want you putting a ladder in their yard to maintain your structure. So this is the, these are all, I'm just trying to explain the different considerations that we have. This isn't an emotional decision. It's not, nobody's out to get you, nor, but at the same time, I can't...
It certainly feels that way.
Excuse me?
It certainly feels that way, because I didn't follow the cease and desist order. Every time I come in, you guys bring that right back up again. I didn't follow the cease and desist order.
Well, unfortunately, unfortunately, that's a very...
Mr. Fitzpatrick has the floor, ma'am. Mr. Fitzpatrick has the floor. Go ahead.
Unfortunately, Ms. Laramie, that happened, and it's nothing that we can do about it now, it's already behind us. And I understand it keeps getting brought up, but at the same time, this is an amended application. You were down to two members that could hear it. We have a new member that's on the board. We had another member that may have missed a couple of meetings because of this great pandemic that we've been through. So it's just bringing, it's not trying to rub, rub it in, in your face. It's, well, you can take it any way you want, I'm just explaining it to you. Everybody needs to understand the history of this particular case in order to make a fair and proper judgment.
Can I have the floor now?
Yes, you may.
I agree, Mr. Fitzpatrick. Everyone needs to understand both sides of the story. The other side of the story is, the cease and desist order was handed out by, is it Mark?
Yes.
And then a conversation and an email ensued afterwards that said, "You had better make it safe, or we're coming after you. We're coming after you. Something happens, somebody gets hurt, some little kid gets hurt, that thing falls down, it's on you." I, and Mr. Chairman, you are right, I did not take it down. I honestly didn't think of that, because I assumed I was already in the spot and that it was a simple matter, where you would just say, "Yep, you're right, special permit, you, you made it better." I, you know, I didn't think I'd have to take it down. So to make it safe, to conclude what the building inspector told me to do, I made it safe.
He did not tell you to complete the project, did he?
I did not.
Yeah.
He, he didn't tell you to complete the project. He told you to make it safe.
Make it safe.
Right.
Correct.
Right.
Correct.
And he would never tell anybody to complete a project without a building permit. He would never tell that, people that.
Well, then, then, I mean, we have an email there, somewhere there.
I'm ready to move forward.
Yep, I am too. I am too. Okay. If we don't have any other comments, we...
I just, I just want to know...
Oh, go ahead, Ron.
How do you, if she, has she ever talked about, are you, did you ever talk about making it smaller, or...
Oh, it's already there.
It's there, it's all...
It's up, built. Footings are in the ground. I believe the concrete's poured too, right, Ms. Laramie?
The stone patio's in, yeah?
Yeah, stone patio's in.
Well, the building's on concrete.
Yeah, this is a complete structure.
This is complete, the roof is on there.
It is not complete as it would be to be you. It is...
Right, well, what he, what he, what he's asking is if you could have moved it. I'm trying to explain to him that it would be difficult to move it.
Oh, I can't really hear that foot on that side of the road.
Yep, yep, no, I'm just making sure that you heard that part.
Barry, do you, do you have anything else? I kept interrupting Barry. I'm sorry.
All right, we're gonna, this is gonna... We'll just keep going around and around, sir, so...
Answer one question, you're never gonna put sides on that?
No. What do you mean, signs like for sale?
No, sides.
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 That has nothing to do with it, Lou. It's two feet, it's two feet for three feet.
It's not built for that, right? Okay.
No, I, you know, I may put a screen on and her...
Okay.
But I'm not even putting nothing.
No windows.
All right. Before we close the public hearing, do you have anything else, Attorney?
Well, the only thing I'd like to say to make clear, because I think the point's getting lost, and I understand your point, but what she indicated was that the patio has been there, it's been used, and there's been iterations of various structures covering the patio. And that's what she, so there's been this iteration of structures over a number of years. And that's what she, and I don't want that point to get lost, as far as how long it's been there. That's the last point you'd like to make.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I like, one question. How far is the building in, on that lot? Now, there's a building behind it, a neighbor, right?
To the side. To the side.
Yes, to the side.
To the side.
Is there anything behind her?
The lake.
The lake.
The lake is on the other side of that?
The thing is, there's, there's a, the, the, the...
One minute, he's showing them on the plot plan.
The house is over here. You're looking at it from the street.
Yeah.
There's the lake right there.
Okay, what's that?
Property here, property there.
Yeah, yeah, what's on here? Another house?
Yes.
How close?
10 feet from the property line.
10 feet.
Yeah, he built a big, beautiful, well, Mr. Snow built a big, beautiful lot, probably, house probably 10 feet from the...
Lot line, okay.
Um, so, and, and on the other side, Lou, we have a brook.